Are you in the tomorrow since Officer Pink is gonna be, uh, at the state tournament? Yeah, the Caber Riddles are gonna be in the state tournament. He catches it. That probably would be, but I was like, gee, it's usually you. It's the tall guy. Well, he has compared to Kenneth. I'm almost as tall as Kenneth. I'm almost as tall as Kenneth. So. Huh. No, I'll just, um, here, I just need to run a check for her. I didn't want my car after ballet sets in the back. She's got a bag, it's just she, because they get to wear their bags today. I just think her stand or sit or move or something. What does that mean? Not. I've got this now. I don't know who to tell me, so I, because we did that for a month. So I don't know if it'll be forty K, but it's usually forty K right now. I've got it right now. You know, just one more crowd inside. And if you're idea, but it's.
If it came to me, I didn't, yeah, not that, not that, I'm not saying it did. I didn't. Oh, did you put that website on?
I have a.
Can you, would you scroll back up? Alright, so that goes to our website, so we'll, we may not have gotten it yet, but I will have that forward to me. So I can look at this. You're, you're giving me information that I don't have yet. Well, I appreciate you.
I'm going to see it come out here, here.
Yeah, we'll check into it. And now that I've got your, um, email, oh, somebody. Alright, absolutely, good to meet you. Appreciate you coming and letting us know.
Are you coming in where you want to sit?
She's got a seat.
Okay, well, I guess I'll stay in the different room, is that okay? Alright. Whenever Cinderella came in. She's got the access fifteen, she's been smart. She's down in Hollywood County. And, and, yes, probably same, so. So probably as soon as that point, I was probably. Make a girl.
How, how are you doing? Good to see you. Well, it's bittersweet, it's bittersweet. Now, she came out. Thank you. Yeah, she, she's ready to move. Couple of months off. Well, she ran, she's already gone to college, so. Yeah, she, it's about a ten. He can push it, get done, and see her. Well, well. Alright, it's the same distance. Nah. She grabbed her party. Got to be ready. Yeah. You already, you already followed. I just. Oh, but there we go. I did say that. That's what I played on here. At this time, we'll call this meeting to warn any school board to order. Want to welcome everybody who's here joining us. For those that are following online, uh, you can follow along with tonight's agenda. You can find it on our website, warnschools.com, under the board tab, and then under. Uh, can I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda? Got a motion by Mr. Johnson, take a moment to justice. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, a few old stands for the pledge of allegiance. I might have to call the head, I would do lead us to the flag.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Alright, first up tonight will be, uh, directions, valuation results, and contract consideration. We've all had our evaluation. And it is up to the board to go to extend this by one year. Attention to this. So can I get a motion for a second, so? Extension of one year to the contract.
Make a motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Judgens.
Second.
Second by Mr. Colwell, any discussion over this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any host? Alright, motion carries. Moving on to, uh, tonight's consent agenda. Can I get a motion for tonight's consent agenda?
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Bennett, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, one thing that, uh, the board should consider, we have a couple of policies that are in the consent agenda that we would like for you to pull to curriculum and achievement. Are we gonna pull all five of them or just the first two?
We can go very well, if you get goodbye.
So, I, I would.
But she said the ones that are not, that are first rated.
Okay, so policy two point nine zero zero, student activities, funds, management, and policy two point four zero four, school support organizations. Uh, also, I missed one, excuse me, policy two point six zero one, fundraising activities, so, uh, would like for you all to consider pulling those to curriculum and achievement.
Alright, can I get a motion to pull those three policies to, uh, move those to curriculum and achievement?
So a motion, which carries.
Got a motion by Mr. Colwell.
Second.
Got a second moment to judgments, any discussion over that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any codes? Motion carries. So then we will move back to the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion over that? Ready to take a vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote? Alright, motion carries. So now, moving on. We should be on. Student advisory board.
So, uh, Colin is our lone, uh, student advisory member, so you can either sit there or you can come up to the podium, however you.
I got it. So our crew, we have Kelly Roberts, she qualified for Worlds in Myrtle Beach and will be competing at Nationals. And basketball and black football draft will be coming up. Fishing, we have had several teams place high at regional tournaments. And football, red and blue game scheduled for Wednesday at six P M. Tracker Field, Luke Sodonia and Immowood League qual- called, qualify for state. And scholarship sign, students signed with Cumberland University for black football and rain state with baseball. And Special Olympics had fifteen students that are heading to the Summer Digs to compete in various sports. Our Club News, Black Student Union, new officers announced for the twenty twenty five school year. And the Book Club will be ending their year with a celebratory tea party. Dungeons and Dragons attended the Tennessee Renaissance Festival with seventeen students and three teachers. FFA held their annual award ceremony in honor of retiring members and coaches. Fosa prepared for the international competition, national and planning future blood drafts. Multicultural Club held a joint senior banquet with Black Student Union. Youth leadership printed and donated six thousand dollars and forty-four care packs to the caring heart C N A. Our arts and academia news. The Choir of the Tree City placed second place in the Mint Choir of First Music in the Parks at Hollywood. The Color Guard had fifteen members selected for the next season. College One held survivor style challenges to reinforce learning. And clinical internships had a hundred percent pass rate on the C C N A certification, which is fourteen students. Fourth Black Cultural Club created a new outdoor classroom, taught elementary students and held a successful greenhouse sale. Human A and P conducted futile date dissections. G R T C won the National Fitness Championship in Daytona Beach, placing four out of five of them. Landscape and saw the green screen of forty-one trees to beautify the soccer field. The painting class held an art contest with cash prize for the I theme artwork on the corners. Senior scholarship, over sixteen named scholarships were awarded to the Warren High School seniors, including scholarships from the American Legion, Dr. Pepper, M T S U, WOBO Banks, and Memorial Funds. Major awards were the McCormick Award that was received by Zer- Zerkeel in Mallory, Esparza, and the John Hyde Award by Connor Williamson, San Francisco.
Thanks Colin, any questions for Colin or student advisory report? Thank you, I did skip over, there is no public comment. We'll skip through to move on to our recognition.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, uh, we're honored to have tonight with us, uh, the executive director of the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, it's Dr. Gary Lilly. He is a former superintendent himself and has stepped into this role in the last, uh, year and a half or so, I think.
Year and a half.
That's right, so, Dr. Lilly, welcome, glad to have you.
Thank you so much, I, uh, can't say how excited I am to be here. Uh, my purpose in being here is actually to let you all know about an exciting honor your director of schools has received. So, uh, like Dr. Swallows said, I am Gary Lilly, executive director of the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, or everybody just calls us TOS. And we support superintendents in public schools in a number of ways, through various membership services, also professional development and legislative advocacy. But not really here to talk about TOS tonight, I want to talk about Dr. Swallows. So Dr. Swallows is respected throughout this state as an excellent leader with vision and really a go-to resource. And he is so happy to share his knowledge with others, which is, which is greatly appreciated. He's known as a superintendent who focuses on students and fights fiercely for their success. So I am grateful, Dr. Swallows, for his advocacy on behalf of all superintendents. Of course, I don't have to tell you all that you all were on the cutting edge of the device-free school movement. And, um, to be clear, Dr. Swallows gives you all credit for having the courage to take that on because you all knew that it would be best for students. And while Dr. Swallows shrugs off, uh, credit for implementing, we all know that that's, the logistics of such as that is a sizable undertaking. So since your successful implementation, Dr. Swallows has shared information with, uh, lots and lots of superintendents about the policies and procedures and, and how you manage that. And at this point, when superintendents call us, TOS, to say, well, how are we supposed to do that? We really recommend they talk to Dr. Swallows and he's happy to help them, so we appreciate that. As a member of the, uh, T double S double A Work Control, he offers an important district-wide perspective to the group, which improves the decisions that they make, positively affecting really all the districts throughout the state. Because of his experience, his judgment, and his advice, we often have him, uh, serve as a mentor for other superintendents, which he happily does, and I might add with, with no compensation. So, uh, certainly new superintendents and in our organization really appreciate that. And finally, I'll add that I have gotten to see Dr. Swallows more this past year than most, as I have run into him on numerous occasions at the Legislative Committee hearings, where he's offered testimony on both the device-free, uh, schools and about legislation that could be problematic, uh, for governing interest of athletic athletes. So for these reasons and more, it's my honor and privilege to let you know that Superintendent Dr. Grant Swallows has been selected as the upper Cumberland Superintendent of the Year. Listen. You, you can tell the respect and admiration that I have to Dr. Swallows, but I want to let you know, I had nothing to do with this. Uh, so the regional superintendents of the year are selected by their peers in each region. And I think that really makes it even more special that Dr. Swallows, uh, peers here in upper Cumberland region selected him. The criteria is set by A A S A, which is the National Organization of, uh, Superintendents, and is based on leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and community involvement. So at this time, I would love to present Dr. Swallows with a plaque commemorating this, this honor. Thank you all, thank you, Dr. Swallows.
Alright, let's move on from that, thank you, Dr. Lilly. Our next, and, uh, order of business is to recognize our classified and certified employees of the month. And so, um, if you want to go over and recognize or go over there. So, uh, our classified employee of the month for May of twenty twenty-five is Mr. Marlin Scott. He is our maintenance, uh, one of our maintenance supervisors. And he was nominated by David Northcutt, and I'm gonna read what David read about him. I would like to recommend Marlin Scott for the employee of the month. Marlin is the type who cares for the district first in his job. He's always trying to do better, uh, trying to better the schools for our children and employees. He works hard to make everything as safe and as pleasant as he can for everyone. He goes above and beyond on everything, and when it comes to my job, I couldn't do my job without it. He is my right arm, and I've never given him a task that wasn't completed. Marlin is a great person to work with, and I'm glad to call him a friend, and that, this is why I recommend this recognition. Again, that came from Mr. David Northcutt. Our classified employee of the month is Mr. Marlin Scott.
Come on, David. Congratulations, Marlon.
Our certified employee of the month, uh, is Ms. Jessica McKinney. Uh, Ms. McKinney is a special education teacher at Dibble Elementary. She was nominated, uh, by Ms. Haley Wood, who's the assistant principal, and Mr. Matthew Killian, who's the school psychologist. And this is what they said. Mrs. Jessica Mc- Jessica McKinney is incredibly deserving, is incredibly deserving of the employee of the month for her unwavering dedication, compassion, and genuine care she shows all of our students, but especially our students with special needs at Dibble Elementary School. There are so many examples that show her commitment, but today, on April the eighteenth, it is one that truly stands out. As a member of the school's emergency medical team, Jessica responded without hesitation when a student experienced a medical emergency. When the child's parent couldn't be reached, she immediately rode in the ambulance with the student, holding their hand all the way to the hospital. She has built a strong relationship with this child and knew her presence would bring comfort. She stayed with the student in the E R until the parent arrived. She didn't ask for any recognition and quietly returned to work afterward, treating it just like another day in Dibble. That kind of selfless, selflessness and heart is exactly why she deserves to be recognized. And added, principal, and added from Principal Sheila Anne, Jessica Mc- Jessica McKinney is a dedicated teacher. She works with our students who need more intensive support and intervention to help them make academic progress. Mrs. McKinney has built strong caring relationships with our students at Dibble, and she's made a difference in her students' lives. We are blessed to have her as a part of our Dibble family. Our certified employee of the month is Mrs. Jessica McKinney.
Everybody that nominated, I'd give you a good. As Chairman Coke is making his way back up here, this is typically a time where we pause for a second for anybody that would like to slip out. If not, we welcome you to be here. Okay. Alright, we'll move on to facility and resources.
Alright, I will invite Mr. Northcutt up to the podium, let him talk to you a little bit.
Okay, for this month's facility and resource, I think, uh, we'll start with the West Basement Project again, but I do have views this time. I did talk with, uh, Mr. Allen Hill, and he did finally send the final drawings to the fire marshal. And he sent them to the guy that he talked to before about the project. And he's hoping that by sending them personally to him, that he will be the one to review, so maybe it'll go quicker. So that's what we're hoping for. Uh, there, I, I did talk with the contractor for that project, and, and they told me this year, man, that they're ready to go as soon as we give them the okay. So they're just, everybody's just waiting on that, that approval of fire marshal. Uh, we've got the C T E building emo'd, we're, we're waiting on further instructions as to where we want to go as far as the design on it. There has been two companies that came in and looked at the space, and they're working on a design for what they think that we can use with what classes we have. Uh, so we're, we're waiting for that design. I think Tracy is working with them pretty heavy, uh, so, uh, maybe we'll get that going here pretty soon. Uh, I, I don't know if y'all noticed it or not, but at Nonelet Stadium on the visitor's side, that building sitting up there at the top, we're, that's our, that's our restroom facility that we're going to, to keep going. We're going to take that building and put some, some restrooms in there so our visitors can have, uh, restrooms on that side of the stadium to keep them from walking all the way across or using a, uh, porta john or whatever. Uh, hopefully, that, that's going to be a, a, a good thing for, for everybody. The sidewalk project, uh, at, uh, Urban College, we have, we contracted that out with Mr. Jared Oneimer, and he told me he's gonna start, schedule start in the morning, tomorrow. So that's moving on, hopefully, yeah. Uh, and then the other thing that I've got on my list here is that, uh, we're just trying to get everything geared for our summer work. We've got a lot of projects we, we're wanting to do in-house, and, and we're, we're just trying to get materials together to try and get started on some of those, and, and hopefully we get that done. Uh, it seems like our summers are getting shorter and shorter, but, but we'll get as much done as we possibly can. Are there any questions? Go ahead there.
On the visitor's side of the Nonelet Stadium, you're talking about, uh, restrooms, you're going to kind of concessions, all of that.
Well, uh, Grant and I have talked about that, and maybe once we get the, the restrooms going, we might could add a little something on the side of that building or somewhere where, uh, we have talked about that, and I'm looking into that.
I was asked about, and I know the, the access road to Morrison is, what about the fence over there, is there gonna be a fence on that play, pre-k playground area?
Yes, I've, I've actually done some measures just for, up there where the main playground is, where the road comes around through, to block that off, plus back there on the pre-k too.
Okay.
I've, I've actually measured all of that off.
Alright there, thank you.
Alright, moving on to operations report.
Alright, so, uh, thank you again, uh, for the opportunity to allow some of our schools to come. Last, but certainly not least, we have saved Dibble Elementary for, uh, the May update, and so I'm going to invite their administrative team up to the podium and let them, uh, share with us a little bit about what's going on at Dibble Elementary.
Well, I am Sheila Anne, and I have been in Dibble for thirty-one years, and this is my last year. And I was blessed by God to be able to teach every twenty-one and principal the last ten. And I am passing on the reins without any problems at all, uh, to the two wonderful ladies behind me, Ms. Haley Wood's gonna be the new principal, and Ms. Tanger Mullins will be the assistant principal. And I know that they will continue, uh, to expect excellence, like I grant you, and we have some of our, uh, teachers here tonight, um, to be a part of the final night here. So I would pass over Ms. Haley, who has been gracious enough to put together a slideshow of all wonderful things we've accomplished this year.
At our last teaching and learning meeting, Dr. Ryan asked us to think of a few words that describe our school year, so we.
So we collaborated together and two words that really stuck out for us were growth and celebration. So in the video you're about to see, you'll catch some glimpses of things that we celebrated this year, but I wanted to take a minute to highlight just a few. So at Dibrel this year, especially with me being new and joining, I think we really built a stronger Wildcat family. I noticed that they embraced me immediately and I'm so appreciative of them. We welcomed over four hundred students in the fall, collaborated more than ever, and brought a lot of energy and fun to our holidays, which you'll see, whether it was dressing up for Halloween, Hundred Day School, or Dr. Seuss Week. So we had lots of student and teacher participation. We also made memories outside of the classroom, taking trips to the pumpkin patch, falcon's breast, Rock Island, Chattanooga Zoo, and more. In the classroom, students tackled phonics, math equations, and even dissected rats, and I got to do one. This is missing. Um, we had a joyful Christmas performance, we honored our veterans, a really great assembly, and we held a mock election that our students were, I think you were there, Mr. Colwell, on the edge of their seats, waiting for the announcement of who was going to win the presidential election. And seeing their involvement and commitment to it was like nothing I've ever seen. They were shouting and cheering at the end of the day, it was great. Athletics, our boys sports team, I think, I'm not super supportive, but I think that the answer is they finished first in season and second in the tournament. And if not, we're going with that, because I just said it on my record.
That's very good.
Right, is that right?
Yeah.
I think it is, okay, so then.
Barely second, barely second.
One of those, should have been first. Um, we hosted an archery tournament for like us and surrounding counties, and we've had over five hundred archers come to Dibrel. And Ms. Mullins and Mr. Mullins are a big part of the reason that's so successful. Our staff had really big moments too, so Peggy Cantrell and Dorian Lefler were named Dibrel Teachers of the Year. And we are thrilled that Mr. Lefler was selected as district middle school teacher of the year, and he's still in the running for Tennessee Teacher of the Year. We recognize Peggy Cantrell and Olivia Winter as our CKH celebrities of the month for their amazing work of building strong relationships with our students. We even had Dr. Barnett, CEO of NIET, visit us at Dibrel for our instructional leadership team. As far as academics, growth was incredible there. At the start of the year, we only had one percent of our students in kindergarten through eighth grade be on or above grade level in math. So one percent of our whole school. We're ending the year at twenty-one percent. So that's a huge growth for us, we're really excited about that. In reading, we started the year at five percent of our K-five students on or above grade level, and we're ending the year at thirty-one percent on or above grade level. Half of our kindergarten, fifty percent of our kindergarteners are at grade level right now. We are very proud of their progress. And one of the biggest celebrations that we did this year was our I-Ready Growth Drawing. You'll see some pictures of that, they were so excited, it was the buzz for a couple weeks. Uh, on a personal note for me, this has been a big year of growth. I've had the honor of learning over Ms. Gann for her final year as principal, and we're very thankful for her leadership. I was also blessed to partner with Ms. Mullins, um, and I know the future will continue to be bright at Dibrel. So now it's time for us to rest and recharge, all of our amazing teachers here, they deserve that. But come back ready to build on all the things we've accomplished in the next school year. Enjoy our slideshow for some of the fun and celebrating that our students and staff did.
Have any questions for our tribe from Dibrel?
No question, but I just want to give a huge shout out and a thank you to Ms. Gann here. And I enjoyed working with you and respected your leadership and appreciated your leadership. But I'm totally excited about what the future holds. And rest assured, Dibrel will be in good hands. Like I say, you've left it, you've left the foundation, like I say, you left plenty to build off of. We appreciate you, like I say, but we're excited for Haley and Tina and the other Tina coming on. Like I say, we've got a lot of exciting things to do.
Well, I would just echo what Mr. Colwell said. Uh, I know this spotlight is about Dibrel, but for me, I can't speak about Dibrel without talking about Sheila Gann. Because the first time I ever met with anybody, the first time I had ever been in the building, Sheila Gann gave me the history, gave me a T-shirt, purple and gold, and said, uh, this is home of the Wildcats. We're proud to be Wildcats. And she has lived that every day that she's worked there, and she's worked passionately for that school. Uh, and here's the thing, uh, people tell me she's been counting down the days for a while of when she was going to retire. Uh, she has a full-time job apparently lined up after this, and we certainly know that she's going to go give everything she's got to that job. But Warren County Schools and specifically Dibrel Elementary, I mean, she was, so we're grateful for you. We're grateful for all you've done, and we're going to cheer you on in the next chapter. We've got a little present for you, I don't know where it is, I'm going to point it for you, I've got it to here. So these are for you. They were done by our agriculture department, you've gotten a bunch of plaques. We thought this would be a whole lot better for you to take home and love on, so.
I was actually making some.
There you go, thank you.
Are you sure you don't want to ask questions at this point, because they're getting all busy?
Are there normal questions?
Sometimes. All right, so continuing with our updates, we're fortunate to have Dr. Shay Painter with us to talk about federal programs. So, Painter, come on up.
Title one, so I've been invited tonight to talk a little bit about federal programs. Um, and hopefully give you a few definitions just to help increase the understanding. There's always difference between GP, federal, and this by that, and this by that. So hopefully I'll answer some of those questions. Dr. Click? So, um, part of the federal programs that I manage are broken into those chunks there. So I'll try to break them down and give a better definition as we go. Um, and then the other part of the federal budget is IDA, which is the other part that Dr. Swallows will talk to you about for Dibrel, and it's Willmore, Dr. Willmore manages that. So for Title One, that's one of our bigger buckets, we have nine of our twelve schools that qualify for Title One status. And that money is given to us, it's always thought of as the cherry on the top. So whatever we have to have or we need to run the school is in GP with the federal budget to help enhance things for our students with low poverty, come from low poverty homes. Uh, all of our schools are at at least forty percent poverty, which gives us the concentrated poverty grant that goes into that Title V, I'll talk about it at the end. Um, right now, for this next school year, we have a range of fifty-two to eighty-three percent poverty for our schools that are served in Title One. So things that those schools use that money to manage and buy or purchase are enrichness. So we have some in GP, but a lot of those schools have kids that have greater means academically, so they pay salaries for RTI enrichness to help build reading and math skills in those kids. Um, they buy supplies and materials that can be extra, have kids have more materials that they can't buy with GP that maybe they can use in smaller groups. They also have a certain amount of each of their budgets that they have to dedicate to parent engagement, which is huge, especially in low poverty, pulling those families in, helping them understand about what's going on at school, getting them more involved. And then underneath Title One, which isn't a part for each school, that's Title One, we have the homeless students grant. So we have lots of kids that are experiencing homelessness in our district. And some of that money can go towards, um, travel. If they have to live or stay somewhere for a little bit, that might be out of their school zone, they can't really flush, or provide some extra supplies to help those kids be successful at school. And then we also have another part of that that covers students under the foster care. Next is Title Two, Title Two is for all teachers, this is what we use to fund the professional development. We have lots of contracts with outside vendors, people that come and help us learn how to do what we need to do and get better every year. Um, and we also use some of this money to pay for academic coaches. Title Three is for our English second language learners. Um, that money doesn't pay for any ESL teachers, those are all in GP, but this money is really for extra materials and supplies, P D for those teachers. And then family engagement, they do a really fun family engagement night every May. Uh, this year it actually happened on Cinco de Mayo, probably on purpose. Then Title Four, Title Four is really one that can be moved to different grants. So in Title Four for this next year, we really focused on beefing up our RTI 2P programs, which works alongside the capturing kids' hearts, buying incentives for kids. Um, also band equipment, sometimes they do a little bit of extra, I think it's really great that you can have those programs for kids to rent those instruments and be a part. And then we also need to support Title Two a little bit more with some outside vendors to increase teacher development. And then for Title Five, we didn't have Title Five this year, we've gotten it for next year, which is great. You can see the allocations for Title Five, we didn't function minus that much this year. Uh, but you have to have a concentrated poverty of ages for grades five through twelve at twenty percent. And for whatever reason, we're at nineteen point eight last year, but this year we're back up where we can have Title Five. Title Five, they directly call this in federal programs, the Code of Penitent Grant, that can kind of move to wherever we need it to support other things. So for this year, we're going to really use that for more of the capturing kids' hearts work. We've seen lots of growth through that, bullying and harassment training in curriculum for teachers, and then some tutoring. We have a lot that we have to do for Title Three, I mean, third grade, and we're going to support that in Title Five. I talked a little bit about McKinney-Bento, we have that set aside in Title One, but we've also applied for the McKinney-Bento grant. We did not get it three years ago, so you have to set out for a three-year cycle. This year's the end of that three-year cycle for us, so we've applied again. Hopefully that will give us some more supplies to support those students with clothing, food. Um, the counselors actually are really great to no need, and this year we had to donate another grant where they could go and buy those things, but it'd just be nice to have a lot more money to help those families. And then this isn't federal programs, but it's something else that I have handed in. I want to give a shout out to all the people at schools that are a part of testing. Our testing coordinators did amazing this year. In grades two through eight, there were only five eligible students that did not test, that did not test. We tested every other student that was eligible, I said that backwards to Dr. Swallows one day, and won't let me let it down.
She, well, she told me we only had four people that tested, I said, I think that's against the law.
I was just so excited, couldn't get the word out. And then for the high school, there are only seven. And so for all those students that did not test, it was either, well, they were gone to a facility or something like that, was the reason. It wasn't that they just didn't show up. So I thought that was great, those people in the buildings, they really pushed how important it is to show up, show what all their teachers have taught them, so we had a really great participation rate this year. There you go, I threw that in the paper because I was just so proud of them. Any questions?
Well, I'll just hand over that T cap testing, that was part of that, they knew property for us, and it was the real deal. So I give kudos to all of those, not only the teachers, but the students that have to deal with that for those of the least, it's a, it's a, it's a lot. So I'm thankful for everyone that's gotten into that for sure.
Dr. Painter, you mentioned in under your Title One about a lot of some of the funding and homelessness. Do you know the number of actual eligible or declared homeless students in the school district?
This past year, the last, we had a hundred and twenty-eight when I filled out our application for Title One. Those were the kids that were screened and called McKinney-Bento. We work with the Family Resource Center, I didn't mention that either, without them, those families would be such a great need. They do a good job, they know, they talk to the schools, they find those people and help them. They've gotten washing and dryers, I mean, anything they need, they do a really good job. So without the Family Resource Center, I don't know what some of those families would do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Painter?
Well, I will just, uh, end with the fact that she has taken on federal programs and done such a great job of trying to learn. And this is second year, year two, time is flying, you're having fun. Uh, and she has done a great job of asking questions and just anything we ask her to do, she gives it her all and is serving our district really well, so, uh, thank you, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, our next update is, um, one of our newest positions in the district. Uh, Ms. Sarah Cantrell is going to come up and talk to us a little bit about communications and all that she's done this year with that program, so Sarah.
All right, thanks for having me. Um, I've been told I only have five minutes, and it has been a bit of a challenge to take everything that's gone on in the last year and condense that down into five minutes, but we did it. So, um, I just want to kind of give a bit of a disclaimer upfront, but I've got some slides, a lot of visuals for. So I just want to kind of give a bit of a disclaimer upfront, but I've got some slides, a lot of visuals for you. I usually like to have more of a conversation, but because there's so much information I want to make sure that we touch this evening. I'm going to read a prepared report, so I don't skip anything. So at any time, if you would like to ask a question or air up to make a comment, please do. So a here are a few, the things that we did to elevate Warren County schools through communication. So just to set the stage, it's brand new position, just for this full year, Communications Coordinator. And the purpose of this is to answer the goals and objectives of the district by coordinating communications through consistent, reliable communication to stakeholders. In just one year, we felt that we've built on an already strong foundation for consistent professional communication that connects our schools with our community. So, small text, but I'm only just through it. So one of the most visible markers of our communications success this year has been our media engagement. Since July, we filled in more than one hundred and sixty media requests. Those are from local partners like Southern Standard and WCPI, to regional and state outlets like The Tennessean and WKRM News Two. This level of coverage demonstrates the growing interest in our schools and the trust outlets have in our messaging. Whether it's policy changes, student achievements, or innovative programs, we've been intentional about highlighting the best of Warren County schools. Beyond traditional news coverage, we've also built recurring media partnerships to keep our community informed. We've had regular segment on WBC's Town Talk, and Dr. Swallows has shared updates through a monthly Southern Standard column titled An Open Book. These platforms allow us to go deeper, sharing not just headlines, but the heart of what's happening in our schools. They're a direct line to our community, helping to build understanding, trust, and long-term engagement. So here's just a slide that shows all of the media partners that reached out to us, more than once this year, for a statement, a comment, a story, questions. We got a lot of media requests of them just wanting some background information on things that happen in schools, not necessarily for a story. But they knew that we would respond if they reached out to us, and we would respond promptly. And so if they had general questions, they would come to us and say, hey, what's going on? So, on a local standpoint, this year, we expanded our presence across new, new platforms, including podcasts and video interviews. We recorded Warren County Podcast episodes on location at Warren County High School during the Coming Home festivities during basketball season. Dr. Swallows joined Town Talk for timely updates on district happenings. Our team participated in sidewalk chats with the Southern Standard to talk about projects like the Learning Leadership Center. We also brought our federal programs team, two of them are here with us, you just heard from one of them, to WCPI Public Radio for an end-up discussion on how school funding works, which helps demystify a complex topic for the public. So from statewide media, our efforts gained statewide traction as well. The cell phone policy, or the personal electronic device policy, as we all know it, was a key driver. But by being, by being available and responsive, we earned trust and opened the door for additional stories. We were proud to see Warren County schools featured by News Channel Five, Fox Seventeen, WSMB Channel Four, The Tennessean, not just for headlines, but as a voice in education. So all of these are cell phone policy-related items, except for the one on the bottom where you'll see Captain Johnson. We had a good rapport with this reporter, and so she reached back out and wanted to know what we thought about legislation as far as army pictures in schools. And they came on site, and did a story at the hospital, so pretty cool. Okay. I'd ask you to raise your hand if you've heard the term less distraction, more connection, but I want to do it too. So, once the personal electronic device policy was adopted, we launched a proactive communication campaign, less distraction, more connection. This eight-week plan was built to educate families on the why behind your decision with this policy. We highlighted benefits including increased focus, improved academic performance, better peer relationships, and more student engagement in clubs and extracurriculars. The campaign landed so well that we were able to wrap it up after just four weeks. So we had eight weeks planned, we got to about four, everybody was in it, they had received it, there was no point in beating that horse. So we just kind of concluded the campaign there. But our message was clear, consistent, and well-received. So speaking of campaigns, some other campaigns that we started this year on our social media was the Catching Kids Hearts celebrities, and I think the federal team mentioned this, and so did Dr. Painter. Schools nominated staff who demonstrated excellence in implementing the Catching Kids Hearts framework. From there, district-level winners were chosen and celebrated on social media. It gave us a chance that a couple of you recognized the powerful relationship building work happening inside the classrooms. So this has been really fun, and each faculty member could have one, appreciated it very much. Okay, not a big stuff. Of course, some big news this year come, that came from outside recognition. So we celebrated several Tennessee reward school wins. So here's recurring reward schools for the year, Eastside, Hoover Creek, Urban College. And then we had our latter-grade schools, Eastside Elementary had an A, Warren County High School had a B, Urban College Elementary had a B. And we're very excited about this. And then we had our T boss level-five schools. So, that's a lot in one year, and it's a lot of good. So it was really exciting for us to be able to push this out, let everybody know the good stuff that was going on. And then finally, we were also named a Tennessee advancing district. It's a distinction given to just forty-one districts this year statewide by designation that acknowledges academic growth, equity, and strategic leadership. And then, of course, we can't forget Miss Katie Haseman from Hoover Creek. She was named the Middle Tennessee Teacher of the Year and a statewide runner-up. It was a well-deserved spot, I found one of our very best, so that's fun to celebrate as well. Okay, NIT. I know, you recognize yourself? Sorry, I'm sorry, it's like I shouldn't do that. So Eastside Elementary, there on the left, was a finalist for the NIT Founder's Award and earned not only a trip to Washington D.C., but a ten thousand dollar prize. Huge deal, very fun. And then, of course, Heidi was selected as an NIT fellow, recognizing not just Warren County, but Tennessee on a national level. So, just, the good news just kept on coming, so we just kept on pushing it out. And then more on a national level, four of our schools, Bobby Ray, Hoover Creek, Urban College, West Elementary, remain Catching Kids Hearts National Showcase Schools for twenty-four, twenty-five. With more schools than ever using this framework, this recognition is harder to earn, to earn, and more meaningful than ever. It validates our team's deep commitment to relational students in our campuses. So that was fun as well. Okay, so, back in, it's that recognition, what's going on?
All right, I hear the button.
So connecting our people, recognizing and publicizing staff and student achievements, so that's some of the examples that I've just shown you. We've had great opportunity this year to amplify our programs through career and technical education, nutrition, new policies, as we've already touched on. And then, of course, highlighting some community partnerships. So we're going to go through that, here with some examples quickly. So, this year, we proudly celebrated this year as a faculty student. Dr. Courtney Bennett was appointed to TDA's Virtual Leadership Committee, Rachel Turekatschery was selected for the Tennessee Rural Principles Network. The Pyrex won a state title, and our JROTC readers team brought home not only a national fit challenge championship, or greater national championship, so they're two-time national champion. So again, good just keeps on coming. And then, of course, we talked about being able to celebrate some cutting-edge programs. Pyrex Kitchen on the Go, our very popular mobile culinary food truck. If you've not had a chance to visit it, it is great. It's been by here a couple of times, and we all get on and get our food, it's great, and the students are great, and the food is great. And it's just been a really exciting thing to see come to fruition. Next to it is the Pyrex Road Go Mobile Greenhouse Project. It had its maiden voyage at the end of the week last week, I just have the photos over the weekend, so we'll be sending it out this week, explaining how the high schoolers were able to go to one of our elementary campuses and share some plate knowledge with some elementary students. And then, of course, the Excellence Centers for Excellence, our school nutrition local week pilot program featuring Barton Farms. And then the League Racing Program through Catching Kids Hearts, which equips students to lead and serve. Okay, so community partnerships. Finally, we continue to strengthen key partnerships. We expanded handle with CARE, partnership with the state of Tennessee, ensuring schools are aware when a student has experienced trauma and needs extra support. Through August first, I believe, we've had a hundred and seventy-three incidents. So it's been a very effective program, and we've got great community partners who continue to make that an effortless cause and a numberer. And then we hosted safety assemblies for legal and law enforcement professionals, shared real-world advice with students. These are powerful moments of connection between this community. And then finally, maybe arguably one of our biggest communications project of the year, we are leaving our current messaging platform, which is Skywood School Messenger, and we are going to Parents Square. So the district has already moved to Parents Square. We've already moved as a district-wide communication platform. It unifies alerts, messages, and updates in one place. Our families have told us they want communication, and it's clear, timely, and easy to manage. It allows that, whether it's a classroom reminder, a district-wide alert, or a direct message from the principal, it all lives in one app, one feed with one login. So we're very excited to streamline communications through the district. By fall of twenty twenty-five, all schools will happily onboard, so. Okay, so why we do what we do? So this is our social media engagement over the last year, May eighteen, May eighteen. We have grown our Facebook page followers by two thousand. Our average weekly reach has more than doubled, you can see under reach, two hundred and sixty-four thousand. And our engagements, which are likes, comments, and shares, have surged by over fifty percent. So why does that matter? Because it means our stories are resonating, our news is resonating. It means when we celebrate students, explain tough decisions, or spotlight success, our community is listening and are responding to it. This is why the communication role is created, not just to manage information, but to build a bridge between our schools and our public. We're not just telling people what's happening, we're showing them why it matters. So a few goals for this upcoming school year, we will complete the Parents Square documentation. We are working on a handful of school logo redesigns. We've got some schools who have some either original logos, or logos that just need to be more custom to their mission as a school, their community, their culture, what they want. So we're excited to roll those out in this next school year, give those one of them, which is already done, and they're being very patient, they're not really yet, just yet, but it's phenomenal. I think they would agree. We're going to work on creating a strategic communication plan that falls in line with the overall strategic plan of the district. And we're just going to keep going and going. It's been a phenomenal year. We have nothing to base it on, but it feels like it's been a phenomenal year. And so we're just excited to see where the next school year takes us, so that's all.
Well, I'll, I'll start just by thanking Sarah for taking on a project that she didn't have any basis for, and has done a fantastic job with that. Has been responsive to schools, even today. In the rain, we had a fire alarm at one of our elementary schools, and within ten minutes, she had a post and a call-out to parents, letting them know what was going on. Not to mention the fact that you all passed a personal electronic device policy about a week before she took the job, but she couldn't get out of it. And came on and handled that beautifully. So, who knows to you, or turn it over to questions?
I, I've just got a non-early questions, but it's easy for the public to dismiss this position, disposition that we create. We, there's a couple of us that sat in on a, on a, at our leadership conference, on a breakout session on the reports of Communication Director. We decided that day that that's something we want to see here in Warren County. And one of the things that we're already seeing, but you know, it's taken a lot of load off Dr. Swallows. So even as a journalist major, he, he likes to be in control of that communication, but it takes a big load off him. And like I said, communication is the key, and that's one of the things, I think, we have to put out to our community, is that communication. We've always been that block between our families and our schools and its parents, and that communication, it's, you know, you can't put a price tag on that. So who knows that, to you and, and taking this on and, and the work that?
You know, talking about the personal electronic device, whenever there's, you know, a high police presence at the high school, I know Miss Morris has a daughter there as well. You with your post, Sarah, we know what's going on, and the kids have no clue, because they don't have electronic devices. Instead of getting two thousand opinions, we're getting what's actually going on at the high school. And I, like I say, I'm not going to let him guess that Mr. Coe took a lot of my statements, I was going to say that very much. But we did, we did, we sit in on this workshop a year and a half ago, we left there and said, we have to do this. You know, with Dr., you know, with Dr. Swallows leadership, he knew what he was looking for, and we appreciate everything that you've done. Like I say, you've done an excellent job communicating the good that's in Warren County schools.
I appreciate the opportunity. And yeah, it was an early conversation that Dr. Swallows and Mr. Mike Mansfield and I had, that if we're going to take away the personal electronic devices, that means we need to step up and be the communicators, whether it's process or just information. And so we've really focused on that this year, if there's an incident, we get it out. That was a big driver in moving to Parents Square, because it makes it even that much more easier to communicate with our stakeholders, and they can choose how they want to receive the messages. So we're excited to see that come to fruition.
I'd like to say, I appreciate the job you've done. I always was a bit hesitant about supporting your position, but I think this has paid off, and I appreciate what you're doing.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, so moving on from our updates, we are going to discuss teacher tenure now. Board members, you've had a list of teachers that were recommended for tenure by their principal. Just remember that tenure is something that's changed over the years, and there are specific requirements for granting tenure now. There are four different requir-, five different requirements, I'll read probably the ones that are most important. They've completed a probationary period of five school years, or not less than forty-five months within the last seven-year period. And the last two years being employed in a regular teaching position rather than an interim teaching position. And they also have to demonstrate a level of effectiveness that are above expectations, or significantly above expectations, for the last two years of that probationary period. So you have a list in your packet, I'll read those names to you, and then submit those to you for your approval for tenure. Bobby Ray, Lady Pack, Danielle Lealock, Sydney Chafon, Rebecca Carter, Centertown, Heather Sheehan, Eastside, Melissa Simmons, Hoover Creek, Brittany George, Warren County High School, Monica Reimer, Lori DeArman, Nicholas, or Nick Cantrell, Tiffany Laxton, Russell Prater, Rebecca Gates, Wes, it's Katie Basell, and one of our itinerant school psychologists is Quincy Winchester. And so I submit those to the board for your recommendation, or for your approval of tenure.
Can I get a motion to approve this tenure list?
So?
You got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion of this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries.
All right, so, thank you. Also, the next thing on our agenda is the federal consolidated application approval for IDEA and ESEA. This is for school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. You have that consolidated application and the allocations. Again, this is something that we have to submit to the state for this federal funding, but it does require a local approval, approval. So again, we'll submit to you for your approval tonight.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the federal consolidated application for IDEA, ESEA for school year twenty-five and twenty-six?
Some move.
Got a motion by Mr. Bennett?
Second.
Second by Mr. Colwell, any discussion of this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries.
All right, also, you, for consideration tonight, is an approval of a federal programs budget resolution. This is something that you approve every year, that actually will have to be approved by the county commission as well. Just so everyone understands that federal programs money is something that is managed by the school district. Because we are an eighty-one act district, our GP budget is managed by the county. And so because there is such oversight from the federal budget, federal programs budget, there is a resolution that has to be passed every year saying that it will be managed at the school system level. But all of those funds will move up and down through the state level. And now, with that being said, I've had tons of questions about what is the federal budget going to look like this year for education? And the easy answer is, is we still do not know. However, we are going to ask if you approve this budget resolution. Once you approve it, we'll go to the county commission for their approval as well. However, we are going to ask if you approve this budget resolution. Once you approve it, we'll go to the county commission for their approval as well.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the 2025 federal budget resolution? Got a motion by Mr. Douglas?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion over this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries.
All right. So the next item on the agenda, I'll start and then let you all discuss. There was a, I guess a nomination. I don't know if that's the right term, but we have been asked, petitioned about naming the Morrison Elementary Gymnasium in honor of Charles Slim Ingalls. And so our board policy requires that when that happens, that we seek feedback from the community and from the school building. And have spoken to several folks, including Mrs. Cantrell, who said that she was fully in support of naming the gym in Slim's honor. And so again, once that, that feedback takes place, it comes to the board with your consideration this evening.
All right, I'd like to make this motion to approve the naming of the Morrison Elementary School Gymnasium in honor of Charles Slim Ingalls. Can I get a second?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion on this? I've, I've got a few things that I wanna talk about, speak on this. And one of these was an article. I reached out to some of the family members on this that we, we kinda had this discussion actually before he passed away. And one of the best things was, was an article by Seth Wright in the Metro Journal. And it said, "Believe in yourself. These are the words my friend Charles LaDon Slim Ingalls lived by, and these are the words he will be remembered for." Slim was best known for his extreme fandom and support of local sports teams, especially Warren County High School and Morrison. His devotion to local sports was so well-known that even earned him a coveted spot in Warren County Sports Hall of Fame. An honor usually reserved for outstanding players and coaches, but his support for the community wasn't reserved for athletes. A lesser-known part of Slim's legacy is the countless letters and calls of support he spread generously around the county. I was unfortunate to second opinion of those calls and letters, and I know from stories that I've heard that I was far from alone. Slim left a legacy of positivity and uplifting others, and that's a trait far too uncommon these days. And another, I got a text right before or right after Slim passed away, and this is from, from Dawn Wannamaker. It's his caretaker, the nursing home for him. And she was just talking about sharing some things and that this was the Monday before Slim passed away. And she said that she kinda wanted to wait until all this was approved before talking to him about it. But she, she did the Monday before she left the nursing home before he passed away. She, she said, "That was the last conversation I had with him was I was explaining about this possibly naming the gym after him." And she said, "I think it's pertinent that God gave me the opportunity because we all knew that he was dying." And it was a total shock by the next morning that he had passed away. So I just think this is something that's overdue and I think it's positive not only for Warren County, but for the Morrison community for sure. So I want to thank everybody for the recognition on this. But you may have got any discussion over this?
Chairman, given the feedback that we've probably all received, this is a very fitting tribute. And like I say, it's a great way to honor Slim and the support that he gave Warren County athletics.
Thing I just mentioned to you before, I remember as a kid growing up at or college, Morrison, they were, they were kind of rivals when I was in 7th grade playing basketball. But I still, as a kid, I remember Slim sitting over there and it was just the support he had for the kids in general from Morrison community and the high school. And just the county, you know, just the love and support he showed for, for everyone. It was, it was just amazing to see. I appreciated it even as a kid, just trying to play against the teams that really disliked him.
I'd like to say Slim would call me about twice a year and he would also write me letters for whatever reason. He thought I would have photos of myself on the newspaper. And he would send them anytime I was sending paper to me and then write me a letter. And I just wanted everyone to know that I would miss those phone calls. And I don't want pictures of myself, but I do miss the letter.
One thing I, I can say that about Slim is that when I was president of Morrison, he would come to the ballgames and he would, I would text him home after the games. The thing that's amazing about Slim is, is he kept up with our athletes and he always wanted to know if he didn't know something where one of them was. He'd always ask me to try to find out because he had that much belief in our kids. And that's, to me, that's seen a lot, that's what he means.
All right, anybody got any other comment before we take a vote on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries.
All right. Next item on the agenda for operations is discussion of GP budget. And Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to ask the board to table all three of the budgets discussions. We just hit some difficult times with our budget director, Mary Temper Dunlap. Has lost her brother unfortunately and due to unfortunate sickness and she's been out. And many of you know that I was in and out of the office last week with some sickness with my family as well. And so unfortunately, we've just not been able to get to where we need to get to with the budget. Spoke with county commission, they are certainly aware of that as well. What I would like to ask you all to do is to table these three. You'll have to do so individually because they are agenda items. But we would like to propose that we would have a special call meeting to discuss these budgets sometime after the first of June. So again, we'd like to ask you all to table those discussions tonight.
All right, can I get a motion to, to table the General Purpose Fund 141 budget?
Motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Douglas. Any discussion over this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries. And we'll move on to get a motion to table the federal programs month 142 budget. Motion. A motion by Mr. Colwell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion over that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries. And lastly, a motion to table School Nutrition Fund 143 budget.
Shall move.
Got a motion by Mr. Bennett?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion over this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries.
Thank you all for that. Apologize again, not preferable, but something that we appreciate your leniency with. Next item on the operations report for us is the adoption of the 2026, 2027 calendar. I believe on the agenda, it's listed as the 25, 26 calendar. Everybody listening at home, that one is already adopted. It is already online, 2025, 2026, already there. You can go to the website right now, look at it. We are not adopting that tonight, all right? We, we are attempting in the last couple of years to adopt calendars a year in advance, or two years in advance. So people can plan for, you know, whatever you so choose to do on your breaks. So we submitted to you in your packet a couple of options for the 2026, 2027 calendar. And we did also take some input from our staff late last week. And so just to give you a couple of highlights, the calendar changes in 2026, 2027. We typically have a 9:30 day on Friday, but we've moved that to the Monday of the first week of August. So for both of these calendar options, the first full, the first half day of school, the 9:30 day, registration day would be on August 3rd. That would be followed by no students on the 4th, and then the first full day of school in 2026, 2027 would be August the 5th. Other than that, they typically follow the same schedule. We have Labor Day and Fair Day in September, followed by a fall break that would take place on October the 5th through the 9th, with this Professional Development Day on the 12th. So no students would report that day, their staff would. We have the last two years taking a full week of break during Thanksgiving. That's been well-received by our staff and some of our families. The two options only differ in that we traditionally take a full week at spring break. And then we would wrap up in the normal May time, but the options actually differ. The second option that you have for approval tonight is instead of taking a full week at spring break, taking some longer weekend breaks. And that would be around Martin Luther King Weekend, and it'd also be around the Easter Weekend. But both of these calendars also wrap up a little bit of a week in advance for prior to what our normal end date is. The final day of option one would be May the 21st. The final day of option two would be May the 20th. Let me just give you a little bit of a highlight of why we made these, some of these changes. Because we are taking the full week at Thanksgiving break, we, we have to start a little bit earlier. Because ultimately in semester one and semester two, we need to have as many days that are equitable. One, primarily because of high school being on block schedule now, they change classes at Christmas. So we need to have as close of a number of days in the spring or the fall as we do in the spring. And so one of the reasons that we also gave option two was because typically in the spring, we have some snow days that are built in. We have, we struggle with that. But I will tell you, a lot of the feedback that we got, I will go ahead and tell you, the vote was overwhelmingly in favor of keeping the full week of spring break. I won't tell you some of the comments I was called for even saying that we would take the full week of spring break away. I will not share those, some of those things. But in, in all honesty, we had some teachers that said, "It's very difficult for our younger students to do the starting and the stopping with the breaks." And that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So what I would say to you is that option one with the full traditional spring break is what has been overwhelmingly endorsed by our employees. And so I will submit both these options for one, for approval of one of them tonight.
All right, I'm not gonna even bring up the option two. So I'm gonna ask for approval of the option, option one on the 2026, 2027.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to adopt option one.
Got a motion by Mr. Colwell? Got a second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion as we look through these faces here? I don't think anybody's on. All right. All in favor of calendar option one for 26, 27? Say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries.
That wraps up my operations report, Mr. Chairman. All right. We will move on to Kirkland and Chief. All right. So going to ask Ms. Phillips to talk to us about these policies that are being accepted on first reading. And I think your battery is actually dead, Robinson. You may have come up to the podium. Sorry.
You have the glasses. So these are policies that just made some tweaking. And I thought we were reaching for all these. These were things, some of the things that the auditor and recommend that we dated. So they're very small changes, but significant. First one's on fundraising activities, and that is, as you know, the rich ones have vendors who are supposed to get permission before they start negotiating with schools. We just changed that bar bridge from before they go to schools to before they negotiate because a lot of times that's not called. That's that change. The second one allows there to be a designee rather than calling the director of schools to determine whether or not activity will benefit the school for purposes of allowing vendor to negotiate with school. Those two changes.
You wanna take these one? Go ahead. Can I get a motion to accept the changes to policy 2.601 fundraising activities for first reading?
I'm sorry, there are a couple of other little tiny changes. Do you want me to go over those? I'm trying to get the new system going here. Okay, the other one is, is that we are, we have been, I'm talking about the comptroller's office, the IFA's or individual fundraising accounts where a student gets credit for all the sales they make in the individual sort of type account within the fundraiser. They are not recommended. They have not been recommended for some time now. They're actually forbidden by the comptroller's office. And our policy has long, was long in our trainings told our, our SSOs, our school support organizations, they can't do that, but it continues to happen sometimes. So we're just making this statement here to make that a little bit stronger. And then this does take the fundraising for non-educational purposes, we just make that a little bit more concrete instead of stake or other situations that principals discretion, we've only got three things that they can do with that, and that's bereavement support, award of recognition, and employment route or language support. So that takes that leg weight out because again, that is, the comptroller's office disapproves of that. And it can cause an audit, which we don't want. Same thing would be for the next section. We're just taking out the gray area there to only allow those four areas. Donations from school support organizations or transfers from other schools can also be included. So that just takes care of that all, non-educational donation. And that's all the changes. Mark, come first.
Motion to approve the changes to policy 2.601 fundraising activities for first reading. Motion. Got a motion by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Douglas. Any discussion over this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries.
So the second one is policy number 2900, and that one is student activity funds management. And that just adds that designee to people who can approve handwriting when we're doing student activity funds.
Can I get a motion to approve policy 2.900, student activity fund management for first reading?
Motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Colwell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion over this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries.
And lastly is the school support organization. That's our booster club policy. And we did, one of the changes was just, it's confusing who grants permission for these. The board has to have an agreement with the school support organization for them to fundraise. They can exist as a legal entity outside, but they can't do fundraising in the name of the school or the sub group without the board's permission. What you have, that is typically assigned to the director of schools to do that paperwork. They do do that every year. And y'all get a copy of that, but they do an application every year. It says all the things they have to do, just agrees to abide by those, and then they send them to the director's lawyers for approval. And that just changes that so that it's clear of who that designee pre obviously did to the director's schools. Working on my arrow here soon. It does allow there to be a designee by the director to do that as to when they can be doing fundraising. This also clarifies, this is an important clarification for all of our booster clubs, that a teacher or any other employee at a particular school is a school representative for SSOs associated with that school. And so those folks cannot be a secretary on the show or be a treasurer. So that means that we've always said that in practice, but it hasn't been, sometimes it gets confusing. If a teacher at one school had a child that's in an activity at another school, typically it's an elementary school teacher that has someone at the high school. So this clarifies that they could, for purposes of those other school activities, they could be a officer, but they cannot through the school that we're like teaching.
All right, can I get a motion for approval of policy 2.404, school support organizations for first reading?
Shall move.
Got a motion by Mr. Bennett? Got a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion over this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries.
Thank you.
Is there any other business? Is there any other business?
Yes, Chairman Cope, I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Hobbs, his staff, our maintenance department, I would say David, his crew. The Lord for the weather Friday night, it was a wonderful ceremony. And I know there's a lot of work that goes into that. Like I say, I mean, David's crew was in there right after it, you know, getting the chairs picked up and everything. You know, and the way that class demonstrated themselves, you know, with the respect and everything, the dignity, they set the bar high, looking forward to, you know, I know class of 2026 is very capable. But like I said, I just wanted to give a shout out to that. Like I said, I think they've done a really good job.
I'll pay it back on that to Mr. Johnson, his crew as well as SROs and the sheriff's department for all of their presence and all their psyche concerns there too.
Absolutely. On a personal note, Chairman Cope, I want to thank you and Dr. Swallows for being able to have my daughter here at this point. I appreciate it.
Have you got anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Mr. Jack. All in favor say aye. Meeting is adjourned.